Calling to order, the November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting. Please rise and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Wano is excused, or absent, I'm sorry. Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Sato?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
We have seven out of eight council members present. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Make a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Changes? Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a discussion item, letter N, to talk about the first January meeting for council.
Second.
Motion's made to make an amendment to the agenda to add in as a discussion item for the first meeting in January. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Now, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did somebody make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, motions made to approve the agenda as amended and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. The agenda is approved for this evening. Next item on the agenda is public comments. I believe we have two here. First one is Mr. Mike Sonderman. Mr. Sonderman? Mr. Sonderman? Just a moment. The guidelines shall be substantially as follows. Statements shall be confined to the business of the city and shall be limited to the substance of the business present. Statements shall not contain offensive words. No person make, can make any derogatory or inflammatory statements about any other person or make any political statement or speech. Each person may speak for three minutes. Thank you, sir. Proceed.
Mike Sonderman, one-one-three-two-five, Bridgeton Valley Court, Bridgeton. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This will be a change in tone from what you're usually hearing. First, thanks to the city and the senior citizen, senior center for acknowledging the veteran's service on November eighteenth. Most of the food was prepared by employees and service, by both staff and volunteers. Most of the chefs were up at two in the morning preparing the food, thanks to Brendan and Denise and their entire crew for honoring the vets. They had more vets than anticipated and adjusted nicely to the increased number and the outside caterers shortcomings. In today's environment, where the concept of service has greatly diminished, it was very much appreciated, especially with the music provided by the Scott Air Force Band. Secondly, in keeping with the service theme, my thanks to the mayor and all of the council for all of your efforts in keeping the city such an enjoyable place to live. This, in spite of the airport buyout, reducing the population by one-third, and the issues with COVID. For all of you, the complaints are many, the compliments few, and it certainly isn't for the money. And finally, I have lived here fifty years and will continue to do so until my last breath. Through all your efforts, it will continue to be a warm, responsible, and truly rewarding city to live in. Thank you, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Sonderman. Next up, Teresa?
Hi, everyone. All right, I'm talking about the airport tonight, and the current expansion proposal. There seems to be things that I feel that the public should be aware of. First of all, the contamination that was caused by the toxic waste, which was leaching out of the barrels and then eventually ended up at Westlake Landfill, was once at the airport. And they have been flooded at least in ninety-three, and then torrential rains in November of two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, which also caused flooding. Why that's important is because Coldwater Creek, which is contaminated because it goes through Westlake, landfill, was, has toxic waste, goes to the airport. Well, the airport, let me just read this so you guys can keep up with what's going on. Okay, so this includes the facts, and Coldwater Creek runs through the airport, which is known to be contaminated with toxic waste. The current proposal has them either diverting or damming it or get out of the way for their expansion. And with this is unknown consequences. I was actually told that they didn't want to spend the money on seeing what the consequences could be. And I feel that that is neglectful. The dangers for the people in the area is unknown. The cost of fixed issues by which can be caused by this idea or this plan, which they have other plans that they can use. They also want to remove the old asbestos-lit buildings, which have been contaminated by flood, flooding of Coldwater Creek, and plan just dumping it into local landfills here in St. Louis County. We need a better plan to control and contain the contamination to make sure we do not end up with another Westlake landfill. The airport has had some large floods over the years. And so, it's on a flood plain. So why are we wanting to invest money in this? And it's not going to be big enough for an international airport to be successful. I am not trying to stop the expansion, per se, but I want to see it done safely. So we do not spend, so we do not spread this contamination around St. Louis and underground to other areas, including other states. It's already getting into the Missouri water, which, which three hundred thousand people are drinking from it, just Missouri, and that's what is accountable. But it is also going in to the Mississippi, to the ocean, okay? Then the underground water also is going to start spreading the water to other places, including other states, and contaminating them. So the airport says there's not going to be any significant impact. I want to know, is that you or me? Is that going to be us, like the other people at the subdivision where it has been bought out from Westlake landfill? Who's going to be next? So this plan that the airport has is not a good plan for not just the state, but for the environment. It has to be changed, and they have to come up with a different plan because Coldwater Creek has to go somewhere. So where it will go? It will go underground and spread, or it could cause a flood or a backflow with the Westlake landfill, which is only miles away, which they could actually backflow the water because they have a, what is that called? An underground direction, I can't think of what the name of it is right now because I don't like speaking in front of others. But that's about all I have to say, and please consider that it's in Bridgeton, and, and they have other plans to do. They don't have to do it this way. And they have, they caused the waste site problems. They need to keep it where they have it. So they can dam all those buildings, which is about almost twenty buildings, which is going to end up in other landfills. And that's just not right. And you can't get it out of wood. You can't get toxic waste out of things. And we know it floods.
Thank you for your comment.
All right.
I see no further public comment cards. Next item on the agenda is the approval of amendments from November the sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for the approval of the amendments from November sixth. Any changes? Deletions, friendly amendments? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. The amendments for November sixth, two thousand twenty-four are approved. Next item on the agenda, we have a couple of items under appointments, presentations, proclamations, announcements, and public hearings. First up, we do have a long-term employee that will be retiring at the end of the week. And I'm going to call up Mr. Bookout. He has a presentation to make to her. Thank you.
Sandy, would you please come forward? So, as you all know, Sandy is retiring after sixteen years with the city. And when I was given the plaque, I did contact the city attorney, and I asked him that if I don't present the plaque, does that mean she can't retire? And he said no. So that's official. Seriously, before I read this, I would like to say that Sandy has been an integral part of the city. And when I started here nine years ago, she was my go-to person. And she has been that person for the city for sixteen years. And I know Christine agrees with me, along with a lot of other employees, that Sandy has done a lot of other projects and taken on a lot of other things that weren't part of her job description. And if we can add more employees like Sandy, we will be successful going forward. So I'd like to read this plaque. It says, "Presented to Sandy Jones, the mayor, city council, and employees commend and thank you for sixteen years of selfless dedication and service to the city of Bridgeton and its residents. April two thousand eight to November twenty twenty-four."
Thank you. Okay. I would like to thank everyone for the support I have received, help. Okay, the knowledge I have obtained and the friendships I have made during my sixteen years with Bridgeton, help.
I wish every, I wish the best of everything for Bridgeton and its employees in the future years while I am fully enjoying my retirement. Smiling face.
Thank you very much.
I did think about chaining her to our chair. Still wasn't an option.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sandy. We all love you. All right, next item on the agenda. We have Representative Mary Ann Maxfield from Archimages that will come up and do a short presentation to council. Archimages is the architectural firm that designed the new reception desk out here in the lobby. So please come forward.
So I'm Mary Ann Maxfield. I'm the interiors director with Archimages Architects. We have expertise in municipal architecture. And the city reached out to us for some ideas for their lobby. And I have a little slide show if you want to do that. It's on, it's on the screen. I don't know where your IT guy is. There. Okay. So it was important to leadership to improve the safety of your staff, factors being an incident at DePaul and also COVID. So we went through a design process. We completed the assessment of the existing conditions, and we collaborated with the city, looking at various options for the reception desk. We came up with this built-in ballistic panels in a linear design, which provides obstructed, unobstructed views of the lobby. We'll have two transaction windows and a one-sliding pass-through window. So we also reviewed various materials that blend with existing finishes. And then we're also going to be proposing a new dais countertop because the countertop right back there is damaged. So, and then we prepared construction documents for bidding. So can we do the next slide? So with the construction process, we put construction documents out to bid, and we received four bidders, and the low bidder was Integra. We have worked with them before, and they're good. It's going to be approximately a four-month process once the city approves because there are some very long lead-time items that the contractor is going to have to order. And we're making the contractor, or we're instructing the contractor to have all the materials bought and here, ready to go, before any demo starts. And then he will be providing protective covering to minimize any impact on the existing lobby. So once he begins, it's going to be about six to eight weeks, and he's going to be working during normal business hours. Thank you.
Okay, please stay up here.
Okay.
For the audience and council. The reason she's here this evening and doing this at this time, this is bill number sixty-four sixty-six, which is being first considered later on this evening. She cannot make the second council meeting, or the first meeting in December, for the second consideration. So we decided to have her come forward and speak, and she will entertain any questions you have at this time or comments. So, please, anybody? Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you coming tonight and giving us some information. You said the work will be conducted during business hours. What will the disruption be like?
We're hoping they'll set up a temporary partition to enclose the area of work. They'll be putting protective flooring material, like a masonite down, to protect your lobby floor. And then hopefully, they'll minimize all the dust and kind of contain everything as best they can.
Thank you.
And then all the debris and everything is removed by them off-site.
Councilmember Sato?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This also includes the dais right here, correct, up here?
Just the countertop surface where you're sitting.
Correct. Will that be done like in one straight week? Or will it possibly interfere with a council meeting?
So they're, they are going to be made aware of your dates, and they are not going to be allowed to interfere with their council meetings.
What about like other commission meetings that are here? Do you have to work around those as well?
They definitely will be as, yes, they will.
Because they're mostly in the evenings, but I was just wondering, you know.
Yes, they're going to, whatever they, they'll get as far as they can, and then they'll leave the remaining panels. So they'll install a certain section. I don't think it should take that long to install that.
That's all, thank you.
Any further questions? Comments? Okay.
Just one, Mayor.
Councilmember Norris?
I just wanted to say this looks very nice. I said we've needed it for a while. It's been a, you know, a little, you know, with the element or just the way things are. They have our people out in the open. I did want to ask, I guess they'll have a temporary area, but that's not your really responsibility.
I'm sure your staff will figure out some way to work that.
Because business goes on, so, anyway. All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any further?
It's nice.
Thank you, Ms. Maxfield. Appreciate you coming out. Next item on the agenda, letter K. We have some bid approvals. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Department has submitted their annual material bids as indicated in our packets. They have recommended to the city council for approval the lowest responsive bidder. If there aren't any objections, I would like to consider all of them in one motion.
Second.
I haven't, I'm just asking if there are any. Are any objections, any questions? All right then. Thank you, Bob, a little early, but thank you. I move to approve the annual public works material bids as distributed.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the annual bids as a consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. The bids are approved. Next item on the agenda, we have perfection of bills. First up is bill number sixty-four sixty-four for second consideration. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for a second reading of bill sixty-four sixty-four.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for a second reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty-four dash PZ dash zero-six, amending special use permit ordinance number twelve dash forty-three to expand the duration of outdoor seating associated with the restaurant and bar located at one-two-three-four-four Natural Bridge Road.
Second.
I move that bill sixty-four sixty-four become ordinance number twenty-four dash forty-nine.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded that bill number sixty-four sixty-four become ordinance twenty-four dash forty-nine. Discussion. I see none. Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to table bill sixty-four sixty-four.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to table bill number sixty-four sixty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
I move that the proposed use set forth in bill sixty-four sixty-four be determined to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of the city of Bridgeton in accordance with and in the accomplishment of the comprehensive zoning plan of the city, taking into consideration the effect of such building or use on traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community, and public utilities.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded.
I find as fact that the proposed use will have an adverse effect on the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people of Bridgeton with respect to traffic conditions, fire safety, the character of the neighborhood, the general welfare of the community or public utilities, and my vote is nay. The reasons I'm citing are character of the neighborhood and the general welfare of the community.
Councilmember Luther?
Concur and vote nay.
Councilmember Hood?
Concur and vote nay.
Councilmember Norris?
Concur and vote nay.
Councilmember Westy?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Sato?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Patel?
I concur and vote nay.
By a vote of five to two, the bill fails. Next item on the agenda is consideration, no, I'm sorry, there's another perfection of bill, bill number sixty-four sixty-five. Councilmember Luther?
Move, thank you, Mayor. Move for a second reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-five.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for a second reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement approving participation in the federal three forty B drug pricing program for DePaul Hospital. Move to that bill sixty-four sixty-five become ordinance number?
Twenty-four dash forty-nine.
Twenty-four dash forty-nine.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for bill number sixty-four sixty-five become ordinance twenty-four dash forty-nine. Discussion. I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke?
Nay.
Councilmember, did you say nay?
I said nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sato?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
By a vote of six to one, bill number sixty-four sixty-five becomes ordinance twenty-four dash forty-nine. Next item, consideration of new bills. The city attorney would like us to go back and revisit bill number sixty-four sixty-five and go to steps six and seven, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sixty-four sixty-four, I'm sorry.
I move to suspend the rules and remove bill sixty-four sixty-four from the table.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to suspend council rules and remove bill number sixty-four sixty-four from the table.
It's probably we're working on. Okay.
Did you second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none.
I move that bill sixty-four sixty-four become ordinance now twenty-four fifty. We're out of order now.
I'm going to refer to the city attorney.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, which number was the bill sixty-four sixty-five given?
Twenty-four forty-nine.
So this will be twenty-four fifty?
Twenty-four fifty, okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded that bill number sixty-four sixty-four become ordinance twenty-four dash fifty. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luther?
Who are we voting on?
Nay.
Same as you voted earlier on this.
Nay.
Okay.
Councilmember Norris?
Nay.
Councilmember Patel?
Nay.
Councilmember Sato?
Aye.
Councilmember? Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Nay.
Councilmember Luke?
Nay.
By a vote of five to two, bill number sixty-four sixty-four becoming ordinance twenty-four fifty fails. Thank you. Back to consideration of new bills. Bill number sixty-four sixty-six for first consideration, councilmember Luther.
Thank you, I move for first reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-six.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for first reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached heretofu with Integra Inc. for the lobby reception area upgrades and council dais replacement project in an amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. The project budget includes a twenty-five percent contingency in the amount of forty-three thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Move to table bill number sixty-four sixty-six.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to table bill number sixty-four sixty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number sixty-four sixty-six is tabled. Next item, bill number sixty-four sixty-seven for first consideration. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-seven.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for first reading of bill number sixty-four sixty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached heretofu with Gerstner Electric Inc. for the installation of LED street signs in an amount of ninety-four thousand eighty-eight dollars. The project budget includes a twenty-five percent contingency in the amount of twenty-three thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars. Move to table bill number sixty-four sixty-seven.
Second.
Motion is made to table bill number sixty-four sixty-seven and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number sixty-four sixty-seven is tabled. Discussion items, councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. According to Resolution twenty-twenty dash oh-nine, which is the amended and restated rules of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, under section two dot oh-one, we're to have regular meetings on the first and third Wednesdays of each month. However, we can reschedule by a majority vote at the city council. Currently, January first is a Wednesday. It's also a holiday. So we need to decide whether to not have a meeting or reschedule it.
Councilmember Westy?
I know personally, I will not be able to attend that. I'll actually be out of town for that week. So if we were going to reschedule it, I would ask that we ended up pushing it to the following week. I would also be okay with just canceling that particular meeting and moving to the, only having one meeting in January.
Councilmember Sato?
I agree with both of those. I'll second either one of those if the votes go that way.
Okay. January second, we got a councilmember Norris.
Yeah, I, I, I would prefer the January eighth, but the Thursday night, January second. Can we do that to the?
Can we do that to the? Can we do January eighth? Do we have anything going? I don't have my calendar. Do we have a Wednesday? Is that?
Okay, so, the city clerk reminded me it doesn't have to be decided on tonight.
Okay.
So if everybody wants to look at their calendars, then we can discuss it further. Is that good? Councilmember Luke.
Yes, please. I had sent out an email either today or yesterday about if everyone could respond to that, to all with your preferences, then we can make a decision at the next council meeting. If that's agreeable with everyone.
Okay. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Attorney's report?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Council Communications. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say congratulations to Sandy, who is not here at the moment, but for her years of service and dedication to the city. And also I'd like to say thank you to Mike Farnum for his very time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sattell.
Nothing against this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Westy.
I'll try and be fast. As a lot of people probably know, we just got done having all of our budget meetings. They took a little bit of time, but I feel like we got to a pretty good point on them. I wanted to thank Christine for all the work she did putting together the packets for us. I know the binder that she does and all the work going into it leads to many, many, many late nights. Also wanted to thank Karen for making sure that we were fed for these meetings. And also kind of, you know, wrangling us and keeping us on track. So Karen, thank you very much for that. And one other thing, and Brendan, I hope I'm not stealing something from you, but at the park board meeting last night, we were discussing the tree lighting event coming up on December sixth between six and eight. And I know myself and my family are really looking forward to it. I hope people here in the audience consider coming by. Brendan's team really does a good job with all these events. And I think this one's going to be a really great one as well. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Luther.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So thanks for everyone for attending. Congratulations to Sandy. That was a sweet farewell. That's a good farewell. There are other kinds of farewells. Sweet farewells are always nice to see. Thank you for everyone's work on the twenty-twenty-five budget. It was grueling. But we, and we'll hopefully bring that forward and be voting on that in December. And away we go in January. I, along with a few other members of council and the mayor, attended the opening of El Morelia Supermercado. And I want to say that the flautas are very good there. You have to try the restaurant. They have some great food there. And they were very thrilled to have us there. And it was great to be there and welcome a very large new business. It's a very nice store. The also attended, councilmember Luke and the mayor and I attended the St. Louis County twenty-fifty Open House. And that was a very interesting, we ran into several people that have connections, another mayor, other people involved in the community. It was just nice to get out and, and see what's happening in the county and, and participate in their really survey, interesting way of collecting a survey of interest. And last, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't cover the things that other council members have already covered, but ditto. And then the historical spirit speaker series was last week. And that was pretty interesting. Someone from the department, the Parks Department, came and talked about the old courts building and the renovations that are going on with it. And they hope to reopen spring, hopefully by May. So that'll be interesting. I look forward to that. Congratulations to Sandy. We'll miss you. Also to fellow council members, I sent out an email today about the charter changes. We have until January to make recommendations to the Board of Elections if we want anything on the ballot for the voters to vote on. And then last but not least, happy Thanksgiving and safe travels to anyone who's doing so.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris.
Well, I am going to ditto, or I'm going to say, I, I attended the opening of El Morelo's supermarket. It is a wow. You, if, even if you don't like Latino food, go in there. They've gone from nine thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet. So it has got more products than I've ever seen. And I had a friend that went in there and she was standing behind someone that was from California. And they said they don't have this in California. It was the biggest ethnic store that they've ever seen. So they were so excited, they were loading up and I guess taking it to California. And also I attended the Veterans Breakfast with my husband on November the eighth. It was spectacular. And the senior division for hosting the food, the good friends, and the great entertainment from Scotty Force Base, they were, they were great. I am gathering information for the committee regarding the business community. I'm organizing a packet to begin this process to improve communication. I will be in contact with the committee soon as I gather the who, the where, the why. And also, one of my first things I'm going to try and do, we have a map here from Bridgeton. It is from two thousand year, year two thousand. I think this would be a great opportunity for our community as residents and businesses. It gives a little synopsis of our city and plus, you know, our wonderful city. But it is the, you know, it was the past. And we want to have a new Bridgeton. So I think this should be something that we should work on and give people because these are not our streets anymore. So we need to, people understand where our city is. So that's what I would like to work on. And so I will be contacting, I guess, Mr. Bookout or the movers, whoever can get this going here. And also I wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Norris. Councilmember Hood.
Yes, I appreciate everyone's work on the budget last week for the meeting that I wasn't able to attend. I understand you guys did quite a bit. And thank you. And when Mr. Bookout said that Sandy was a go-to person, I can specifically identify with that. Because she was the rock that was holding this building up for a long time. So she is definitely going to be missed. And I wish her well in her retirement.
Thank you. Staff reports. I'm going to start with Brendan Kane, Parks and Recreation. Director, thank you.
Just a reminder that the Parks and Recreation Department is doing the Feed the Masses Food Drive all the entire month of November. Compete friendly competition with about twenty-five other municipal park departments. And as of, after the first week, we were in first place. So keep, keep donating if you can. We've got a collection box here and also at the rec center. So that's through the entire month of November. Next week, we'll have the Member Appreciation Week at the rec center all week, Monday through Friday, not on Thursday for Thanksgiving, obviously. We'll have beverage station and pizza on Monday, fruit and bottled water on Tuesday, mystery giveaway on Wednesday. Don't ask me, I can't tell you. Bring a friend day on Friday and Saturday and some other fun raffles and things. So that's all I have.
Any questions? Mr. Kane? I've got one. Can you address the font on the McKelvey Park sign? Is there any way to make it larger or has that been done already? Are you all are still learning on how to put items on there, I guess?
Yeah, so we've got it dialed in pretty good now. The only issue is whenever you put up a new ad, you have to physically go out there to look at it. It might look good on the, on the screen in your office when you put it up, but you have to physically go out there. Staff tries to make it out there that day. Sometimes it takes a day or two to get out there. So, but once we are able to take a look at it and go and make adjustments, everything is looking good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Chief?
Sure, good evening. Just wanted to echo the comments made and congratulate Sandy Jones on her retirement. As councilmember Hood said, the, her expertise and experience is really going to be missed. Also, she's genuinely just a really exceptional person. And that is not going unnoticed. And our staff is really sad to see her leave, but really looking forward to her having a great retirement. Also, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Following Thanksgiving Day, I know Black Friday is always a busy shopping day. We will have extra officers out keeping an eye on the parking lot. So if you see them out there, they'll be trying to keep an eye on things as we approach this holiday shopping spree. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions, council? I see none. Thank you, chief. Mr. Peterson is filling in for Robert Gunn, our Public Works Director. Mr. Peterson?
I have nothing to report. But I would like to say, yes, Sandy will definitely be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Bookout, city administrator.
Yes, I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I got about five items here. First of all, congratulations, yes, to Sandy. I've gotten the opportunity to learn more about her and since I became mayor, since I'm working inside now as opposed to outside on council. And I can see that she provides a lot of support to everybody here at the rec center, at the Public Works facility. So she will be deeply, deeply missed. I know she's been training her replacement for the past couple of weeks. So hopefully that will help out a little bit. But thank you again, Sandy, if you go back and view this video. I too attended the grand opening and ribbon cutting ceremony at El Morelia Supermercado on Saturday. The owners were very gracious to myself and the council members that attended. And the food is excellent. My girlfriend Sally and I had a trivia night to go to that night. So later on in the afternoon, we decided to go back and purchase some food from the grocery store and take. And it was, it was a big hit with the eight members at the table we went to for trivia. We purchased empanadas and some of their chips and salsa and cheese dip. But very good food. I encourage everybody to give them a try. They also had a TV station there, Telemundo St. Louis. The St. Louis Mexican or Spanish TV station, that was nice to see. I didn't even know that we had that in St. Louis. And the lady, the reporter that was there told me they've been in St. Louis for about a year now. So that's nice. Our second Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting is next Monday, the twenty-fifth, at six PM in the multipurpose room. Again, it is a public meeting, so anybody's welcome to attend. And I wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody that's here. Be safe, stay warm. And make sure when you're driving around to, to look around you, make sure everything's safe. I appreciate it. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. For adjourn.